McCoy's tardy.
Of the city council to order. If you'll call a roll.
Counselor Kazer.
The President.
Counselor Anderson, absent. Counselor Nanki, absent. Counselor McCoy.
Here.
Counselor Osick.
Here.
Counselor Hoyt.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
And Counselor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Here.
You ought to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have additions? To the agenda?
Not to the agenda, no.
Okay. Well, I apparently have no additions or deletions. You got -- does anyone want to start off with a comment? No? Okay.
I think Anderson does, but he's not here.
He's not here.
He's calling you in.
I was just going to pause for a moment of silence with the no comment.
For comments.
I'm going to ask unanimous consent to rearrange the agenda to begin with public comment.
A second?
Don't need -- just don't say no.
Okay.
Okay, everybody okay?
Yeah.
Okay, Scott Snyder.
Good morning, Mayor -- or good evening, Mayor and councilors. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. I believe everyone -- I'm first of all Scott Snyder with the Grand Hotel 201 Liberty Street Southeast as well as the chairperson for the Salem Area Lodging Association. I'm here to ask for space on your very busy 2019 priority calendar to entertain the idea of a Salem tourism promotion area. I believe everyone got a memo from me for the concept in more -- I'm not going to read the letter, but just this is an industry-driven program. We're emulating a program that has already been very successful in Portland for over six years. It's a program that has -- we've vetted this concept with several members of the city staff as well as mayor and several of the councilors that to try to expose questions that individuals might have about the legitimacy of the program and helping make sure that we were going down the right avenue. The Lodging Association believes that this TPA is a win-win for the city. The end goal is to increase the amount of transient occupancy tax that is collected by driving higher occupancy in our shoulder months here in Salem from November until March. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that staff may have, or council.
Yes, Counselor Hoyt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for coming down. I did read your letter. I did not have a chance to meet with you. But the one thing that I didn't understand is couldn't you just do this right now on your own without the city's involvement?
Well, that is a great question. It is possible, but in order to have total transparency and making sure that all the properties are participating equally inside the city limits, the protection of the organization that the city's endorsement would have a lot more weight with making sure that everyone is paying their -- collecting the fee from their guests, paying it in on a timely basis and participating equally.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bob Courtright.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, my name is Bob Courtright. I live in West Salem. I wanted to talk to you about the congestion relief task force and the recommendations that you're considering tonight. First, I wanted to applaud the fact that you're moving quickly with those and giving additional consideration to them. I had three specific comments that I wanted you to consider or suggestions for amendment to the actions that you're considering. The first regards action number one, which involves Marine Drive, and I recommend that you amend that to acquiring right-of-way for Marine Drive from Fifth North to Riverbend. And the reason is that the utility of Marine Drive is really its intention is to provide an alternative route to Wallace Road for local trips within West Salem. The segment that is recommended for building in the staff report is from Cameo to Glen Creek, and that doesn't serve that function. It's not necessary. It has great impacts on the park and affordable housing and really isn't appropriate. The staff report suggests that future phases of Marine Drive would require an amendment to urban growth boundary. This is something that I've commented on to you before is Marine Drive does not require the portions that are outside of the urban growth boundary may be constructed. They're in the adopted plan. An amendment to the urban growth boundary is not required to allow Marine Drive to go forward, so it's possible to move forward with that. The second comment that I wanted to make is that you amend action nine to add ODOT as a key partner and to add another next step bullet, and that bullet would be to seek a transportation options innovation grant from ODOT. This is a program that ODOT has. The grant application process will start in January. Grants are available for up to $50,000, and it can fund, I think, just the sort of thing that you're thinking about in terms of providing incentives to employers to use -- for their employees to use alternative modes. My third and final suggestion is to amend either action 14 or 15, and those are the ones that deal with incident management and emergency response, to add either -- to add a signal preemption for emergency vehicles as a means to speed up emergency vehicle response time. My quick comment is that incidents like traffic crashes are responsible for about 25% of congestion, so if we can speed up an incident response, we can make a pretty big difference. And our current incident management plan is more than 10 years old, so it's really something that would help address the problem and concern that we have in West Salem about emergency response when the bridges are congested. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Yes, Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, thanks for coming down, Mr. Courtright.
Sure.
The issue of Marine Drive, I'm a little confused. I think the last time you were here, you were asked if you are in agreement with the Marine Drive that is in the current transportation plan that starts at Glen Creek and goes to Riverbend.
If I understood the question correctly then, I thought it was was I in favor of Marine Drive being constructed, and yes, I am.
Okay, so you are not in favor of the Marine Drive that is in the current Salem transportation plan?
Well, I guess I am.
And to be clear, that starts at Glen Creek, goes up along the park, and then up to Riverbend, and then it has kind of a loopover to Fifth Street. That's what's in the plan now.
I think there's some debate about exactly what alignment you used from Glen Creek to Cameo or Glen Creek to Fifth, and so I'm in favor of Marine Drive being constructed. I don't think you should start with that segment between Glen Creek and Cameo because it doesn't really serve any purpose. I think the real purpose of Marine Drive is served by providing a local circulation function further south. We have an adequate connection, I'm sure you're familiar with it, at Cornucopia that gets you that last little bit to Glen Creek.
And maybe I misunderstood. I've been looking at this for a while. I thought the purpose of Marine Drive was to alleviate the overcongestion on Wallace Road and that it wouldn't necessarily be just an intra-neighborhood street, but it would actually be a street to be used to get from north to Glen Creek and Wallace.
Well, I think it serves both functions, or at least that by providing another way for local traffic to move without getting on Wallace, it will reduce traffic congestion on Wallace.
Okay. Any further questions? Thank you. Those are the only folks I have signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else that wanted to comment?
Yeah.
Mayor and city councilors, I am Linda Verley. I reside at 2308 Tarmigan Street Northwest, and I'd like to come to speak in opposition to your number-one category for your congestion relief task force recommendations. I don't think Marine Drive will ever reduce much congestion. It's just it's a bad idea. It ruins Wallace Marine Park. It ruins the stream. It ruins the slough, and it ruins Pioneer Village. That connection already exists, as Robert Courtright made the point. You can already drive from Glen Creek Road through Cornucopia, turn onto Taven. Taven Street goes right around Pioneer Village. It's a nice, quiet little street, exactly what you want if you live in a retirement community. You can look right across the creek to Wallace Marine Park, and you wonder where would they put this street? So I'm here to ask you to just please, no Marine Drive. It's a waste of money. We learned from Smart Towns, the speaker that came, that you can always afford, or you can't always, you have to stretch the budget to afford new construction. It is the maintenance that will get you over time. And Marine Drive goes to relatively low-value properties. The property tax they pay is never going to pay for the maintenance of Marine Drive over time. It's why we don't have enough money for parks. It's why we don't have enough money for public safety. It's why we don't have enough money for the library, because we end up spending too much money on maintaining infrastructure. We can't afford the infrastructure we have right now. At least that's what it says in your priorities and policies. And if we can't afford what we have now, why would we build the road to nowhere without any money to maintain it ever? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone else? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the council policy agenda. Ms. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank councilors for coming in on this holiday week to spend time with staff, and I want to thank staff for being here and certainly members of the public. This is council's first opportunity to begin shaping city council's 2019 policy agenda. Tonight's outcome hopefully will be consensus on issues for consideration that will be taken by staff for development for your work session on January 23. So tonight is really to help provide guidance to staff to bring back issues for your consideration in January. To assist you, we have provided a one-page progress report on the 2018 policy agenda. We also have a staff report as well as the surveys that have been done, including the residential satisfaction survey done this September. We also have the facilitation skills of Brian Scott this evening to help make sure everyone has an opportunity to discuss the issues that are important to each of you for, again, consideration by city council in January. The 2018 policy agenda launched an aggressive program to improve the city's delivery of services to meet the community's expectations, those expectations as set through the surveys that we've been doing. The initiatives and service improvements are tied back to result areas, again, using the progress report format, as well as service enhancements. Tonight is intended to be conversational and discussion. It's not to make decisions. It's not to deliberate. It's to provide discussion and direction for staff to come back again in January. There are many other ongoing service enhancements and actions that are helping accomplish the results that the community has requested that council has set out in the policy agenda and in the budget. Staff is here this evening to talk about those as well as the specific initiatives that were in the policy agenda. The 2018 policy agenda was launched during a time of some fiscal concern. We're using nonrecurring revenues to fund recurring expenditures that can't go on forever. For the 2019 policy agenda, continuation of what we have started is recommended. Of course, the balance of meeting today's needs and service needs and infrastructure needs, balancing that with the future fiscal health of the city is ultimately city council's decision. I would urge -- I would urge -- I would urge a mic. I would urge restraint in considering big new initiatives. You might be asking, particularly on a holiday week, then why are we here? Why bother with this policy agenda? The policy agenda is not only about new big initiatives or major projects. It can also provide guidance on where city council wants to spend its time in 2019. What policy initiatives, what policy issues do you want to see developed in 2019? What guidance, if any, do you want to provide to the city's advisory boards and commissions for their further assistance to city council? And ultimately, what policy direction do you want to provide to the organization for consideration in 2019? So again, thank you very much for being here this evening. We -- staff, speaking for the staff, we really look forward to your discussion, and we look forward to the guidance that you'll be providing as we continue to help implement the strategic plan and the policy agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. One question I have is will we be, as we're going through this, able to pull up staff members then to talk about these?
Absolutely. We intentionally did not provide, or we are not providing presentations this evening. We want this to be your time, so if there is any topic, whether it's part of the progress report or not, yes, please call on staff. If you're not sure of which staff member, please ask me, and we'll make sure to have that person address your concerns or questions.
Okay, great. Any questions for the manager? Okay, good. Brian, I guess we'll move on.
So is this on?
It's on.
All right, great. I wanted to know who cut off Steve's microphone right before he said, "I urge restraint."
Yeah, it was. Like has a button over there.
Good evening. I'm Brian Scott with BDS Planning. It's a pleasure to be with you here again this evening. Our purpose tonight, as Steve said, is to begin the conversation about the 2019 council policy agenda. In late 2017, we adopted a strategic plan for the city to create a three- to five-year agenda for the city, and early this year, you adopted the first council policy agenda, the 2018 agenda. Tonight, sort of a beginning of a two-part process in updating that agenda for 2019. We want to review progress on the items on that agenda, and you have this dashboard to give you an update. I spoke with most of you individually a few weeks ago, and several of you asked for some sort of update on where we are on the previous stuff, so this is a response to that. And then we want to tee up a discussion for your January meeting at which we will make a decision about the 2019 council policy agenda, which will basically be a list of issues for council's attention during 2019. So the strategic plan, adopted a little over a year ago, is a three-to-five-year strategy, and you took a really ambitious start on that. Both the council and the staff really went to work on many items of it, and in fact, it's kind of hard to look at the strategic plan and find an item that you haven't already started doing some things on. So we've got a lot of things going. There are a lot of items on this piece of paper. The ones that have some shading under them are the ones that were specifically on the council policy agenda. There are 10 of those. And then there are seven items that were either underway before we adopted that agenda or came up and got added to the list during the course of this year. And as Steve mentioned, the city's really at capacity, not a lot of room to -- and the one thing you'll notice is that there are little icons on here. There's a checkmark for things that are completed, a little target with an arrow for the things that are on target, gears for things that are underway, and a little clock for things that are under planning. You'll notice an absence of checkmarks by the other items, so most of those things are -- well, all of those things are still underway. The fire station's pretty close.
I'm sorry. I'm focusing on what you're saying, but can someone please explain what's happening with the microphones?
No.
Okay.
This keeps happening. We'll ask that hopefully in advance of future meetings, this will get resolved. I know your frustration.
No, yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I need to use a microphone for the tape, though, right? So I can't just --
A shower.
Okay. Sorry about the audio. So the city is at capacity. You have this long list of things. They're not finished, so the overarching principle here is we need to stay the course. However, you do have the opportunity to shape the way you want to spend your own time over the course of the next year, so if you want to have work sessions on various issues to tee up sort of policy discussions, we can do that, either for the council or if something you want to delegate to a board or commission. You could absolutely do that. Things that are going to have a meaningful budget impact, though, we need to be more than just a little cautious about. In fact, if we have something that's going to have significant budget impact, we're going to have to talk about what is it we're not going to do as a result of that. Is there something on here that we need to come off? I think that would be hard to do, but -- so we want to really think on how you're going to spend your time or anything you want to delegate to a board or a commission. So what I want to do tonight, in the purpose of this discussion, no decisions tonight, but we want to basically tee up the January discussion. So the product I'd love to have in an hour and a half or so would be a list of items that you'd like the staff to work up for your January discussion, so the staff could say, if we're going to take that on as a policy discussion during 2019, this is what that might look like, or here are some choices, or what the implications of that would be.
Are these new ideas then you're talking about?
Well, that's a great question, Mayor. Thank you. I guess we are operating under the assumption that the items that are on here are going to continue the course as outlined, and so if you wanted to change that, either by going faster or taking it off the list, that would be a really appropriate thing. But we could assume that these things are going to move forward, and staff thinks they all should, so that's an assumption. So then the question, is there anything else that you want to take up as a council during the course of the next year? And the first thing I want to do is spend a little time taking a chance for -- to respond, you know, to review and respond to this list. We didn't prepare a presentation because we thought it would take the whole meeting, but we want to give you a chance to look at this, ask any questions. Staff are ready to address anything on here if you want, if you have questions about it, or if you have just thoughts you want to share. So first, I want to spend a little time doing that. And then second, I want to brainstorm a list of things that you might want to have take up for the council agenda at your January meeting, and once we've done just a little brainstorming on that, then we'll go back and discuss those items to see where you are. And then finally, before we're finished, I hope we can agree on something like not more than 10 items for staff to prepare for your January discussion with some sort of pros and cons or trade-offs related to taking up those issues. That -- Steve?
Yeah, that sounds good. Would you like us to -- do councilors have any of these they want to?
Yeah, so anything you want to talk about, or just comment, or ask questions?
Counselor McCoy.
I have some. I guess I have questions. I guess it pertains to these, but it's more in the staff report and some of the verbiage in the staff reports that struck me as vague or not real specific, or if you're going to make a decision here now or in January, I think you need some more information, and that struck me as I went through there, there's a lot of that.
Okay.
So I'll start with the first one. It's the R-Salem Today stuff. It's the first thing, and it says that, you know, the city's first phase is called R-Salem. It analyzes conditions, including a greenhouse gas inventory, and evaluate how Salem could grow under current policies. I don't understand even what that sentence really means, how we could grow under current policies. I'm not sure what that pertains to. And further on, we go into with the support of a stakeholder advisory committee, their conversations are planned to seek and input important factors to measure the city.
I'm going to measure the city's programs. Have Norm come down and?
Happy to. Counselor McCoy, Norman Wright, Community Development Director. Yeah, so the first phase, which is what we're committed to for our Salem, is effectively an analysis of all this various data that measures all these different conditions of the city, and it looks at those conditions today. And in terms of growth according to current policies, the idea that I think we have all come to understand, it's actually even one that I have borrowed from a phrase that you've used before, is that we see in 20 years that there's going to be 60,000 more people in the city, and everyone can offer some idea of what the impacts of that could be, but what we're really trying to do with this particular analysis in this first phase is tie the data and the critical measures that we've come up with, whether it's through the stakeholder committee, but more importantly, through the public workshops that we're going to have, take that data, take our current conditions, add those 60,000 people that we all understand are going to come in the next 20 years by current projections, and see what happens to those variables, those measures, when that impact is modeled out. And so at the end of this very first phase, what you're going to have is you're going to have basically something of a checkup that says, here are our conditions today based on these measures that the public has deemed to be the most important and valuable. We'll have all the measures that the model would provide, but here are the ones that are of particular importance to the community. Here's where we are today on those, and there'd be even something of a grade, right? So in some cases, we might not use this language, but we might get an A-plus on one particular component, and we might get something less than that on another. And these components are all six of the service areas that are the backbone of our strategic plan. And then again, here's what will happen at the end of the 20 years, based on our models, based on these different scenarios under current policies. Here's where we see those conditions in the next 20 years, and then that will serve up, hopefully, a clear set of information and a clear understanding, at least from just the straightforward modeling that we can do, about what we would see with current plans so that you all can have a better sense of what you may want to change in a visioning exercise towards a new plan.
Go ahead.
Okay, and then so important factors to measure the city. So you're saying that's -- you're going to talk about that before you get to what it could look like, or after we agree on what it could look like and what we want it to look like, or then how are we going to measure that moving forward?
Well, this goes back -- this is a while ago, but this goes back to the idea of this organ model for comprehensive planning, where we first got to figure out where we are today, where we are heading, and then from there, that's the two questions that we're fundamentally answering in this first phase. Where we are today, that's the data that the model's going to produce probably 80 measures. And the real key distinction here about the public involvement in this piece is that the public's going to be involved in helping us basically understand what are those 12 measures out of the 80 that they are most interested in so that we just know upfront what that is, and we can deliver that with clarity. But we'll still have all the other components of this model. We'll figure out, again, where we are today and where we are currently heading with those policies, and then that will serve as a basic report based on that data for you to then decide how you want to move forward with the next few questions, which involve where would you want to go instead, the visioning piece. So the visioning piece, this has been a little bit of a critical point here that we've had to make sure that we make clear. The visioning piece won't really occur until Phase Two, and so some of these questions that I think I'm hearing from you, sir -- And so, some of these questions that I think I'm hearing from you, sir, are the questions that we will get to probably in the summer of next year.
Okay. Thank you. And just to make sure that our Salem is revision, is our new comprehensive plan?
That's the project's title, yes.
Yeah, but it's our new Salem comprehensive.
It will lead to that, yes.
And the completion of that is anticipated over the next two years? Do I understand, or one year?
Two years. That would be our aspiration. I think the most important thing, though, that's something of a... That we'll have to very much be responsive towards is how much time is needed for the visioning piece, just to make sure that you all have a sense of comfort about where that lands, because that could take a year, that could take longer. I certainly wouldn't want to box you all into any particular timeframe. But two years is definitely our aspiration.
Counselor Lewis.
Norm, thanks for coming. I'm curious if your study or planning is specific enough to say where these 60,000 people might end up living.
Yeah. So, current policies provide us with a very good idea of our buildable lands inventory. That buildable lands inventory gives us a basic sense of where all the potential jobs and future housing development units, let's say, could locate in the city, based on current zoning and current land use patterns. And so, we have a pretty good indication from there about where a lot of this will come. But there's no doubt that assumptions have to be made regardless. And so, when those assumptions are made, a critical piece about this study and why we're doing it at the front end, so that we can take the time to really spell all this out, those assumptions will be made very transparent to everybody. So, if and when that there are pieces that you feel don't really reflect what would be the reality, we can make adjustments if we need to. But yeah, there will be some assumptions, even with the current policies.
And this is funded at this point?
Yes, sir.
We have a plan for funding this over the next couple of years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question in regard to renovating Salem Public Library. I see that that is not in green, and it's got the planning stage underway. Is that correct, Director Wright?
Could you repeat the first part? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
I had a question in regards to the renovating of the Salem Public Library. I know the bond was passed, but it's still not in the green, which the green means...
It wasn't identified on your council policy agenda last year.
But we passed the bond.
The reason it's on the page is you have the bond, so it's something that's happening that's a major event.
Okay. And so, my question in regards to the library is making plans for renovation and improvement would imply continued use or expanded use. And I know City Manager has spoken to being at capacity, looking at budget issues and how that would relate. My question is, looking at programming and staff levels, what you anticipate, where the levels would be, how you plan to absorb, and also, if that's part of the assessment with programming, with staffing, what are the levels saying? Because I see out in the community, it's something that's served. This happens with parks, this happens with programming. People really like these services. And when they're at capacity, we can't go anymore. But it's hard to measure how many people are turned away when you're at capacity. So, does that make sense, the question that I'm asking about programming and staff?
It's hidden in a lot of important notes. I'm not sure which one to go to first. Is it particularly regarding the continuity of services with the library's reconstruction project?
Well, I think, if I recall, during the budget process, there was no budget set aside for movement of the collection or for off-site programming during renovation purposes. And I think during the bond, it was discussed that they would be able to do the reinforcements and improvements with minimal interruptions, so movement wouldn't be necessary. I'm just wondering if that's still the case, if you found anything out separately, if there is a hazard here that we're missing or not identifying, if we're looking for it. And then, you know, if we have this big, beautiful library that the city has supported and that residents are excited to use, and then they all decide to come on the same day, if we've got the capacity, not just in the building, but with the staff, to be able to absorb that excitement and impact? I know West Salem just reopened some extra hours. If you could speak to that.
So, regarding the seismic retrofit, there's a couple of pieces there that we're still waiting on, basically better information to really assess what our options are going to be. One of those is to retain the contractor, to retain the architects, to have the full project teams, so that we can really discuss options with them. So, much of this depends on what they bring in terms of options with the design-build approach. So, it's going to be really hard to have any certainty around that particular part of the... Well, that whole project, until we get through that next phase. So, in a critical path sense, we're still at the point of selecting our professionals who will work on this project with us. And so, no really good, firm answers until that is done and we move on to the next critical path point. And then, as far as the budget to support our options, whether that's for, you know, working within the confines of the building itself or otherwise, just want to offer some kudos to Casey and the budget staff, because they've really helped us figure out some great options to fund a variety of things. Once again, we have a professional team with us to really shore up some options. So, there'll be a lot more information there coming. There are no red flags at this point, from my perspective, and all the compliments that I can offer to Public Works for what they're doing to help us move along nice and smoothly there. Regarding capacity, it would be a marvelous problem to have, one where we have so many patrons visiting the library that our staff, as well as our programs, are stretched to the limit. That's not the case right now, but we certainly want it to be the case at some point. So, if we can continue to improve those programs and work with our staff and our patrons to provide the best service we can, that everybody wants, that's the goal. We're not there yet, but we would love to be there at some point. Again, it's a great problem for us to have.
Counselor, one suggestion I would have would be for you to highlight this in your own thinking as we go through this process, to perhaps move this into a different level of council interest. And really, we may want to have, like we did with the Police Department, a monitoring committee. I mean, there may be some things you can think of that would allow us both to deal with the construction phase and be... Keep ourselves well-informed, as well as dealing with your capacity questions, which move us forward in time and in program. That might be a... This might be one you'll want to highlight, to bring up in our decision-making.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will add that to my list.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have more of a process question. As I had understood what Brian had to say, he wanted us to maybe pick up to 10 items to move forward to our January discussion. By my count, there's eight left on this agenda that we haven't sort of put in the green zone. And in my way of thinking, because I also think that we ought to just be focusing on our current priorities and not adding to them, because we have a lot of remains to be done. But I don't have a really good sense on some of these. I have a very clear sense on some, because I was directly involved in them, and how much work it's going to take to get them off the ground. But on some of these, I don't really have a sense on what it's going to take, or how much capacity staff has to accomplish them. So, I would suggest that we just add all eight of these things to our list and have staff come back to us in January and give us an assessment on how realistic they are in the coming year. Can we do all eight? Can we just do six? Can we do four? Do we have room for a couple of extras? Something like that. And so, that's where I would like to go.
Point of clarification, and Steve, you might want to add to this, but our sense is, everything that's on this sheet, green or not, is underway and will continue underway unless you tell us... Until you tell the staff to downgrade one of these things.
Well, what about upgraded? I think that's what...
Well, I think that's legitimate. If you want to have more council interaction with, that makes sense. But Counselor Hoy, I don't think you have to say, "Take on one of these ones that isn't," because I think they're already going. So, the question is, are there other things... Are there things on here that you want particularly to have your own involvement in, or are there things that are on this piece of paper that you want that to happen? That's the question. But for the moment, we just want to make sure everybody had the information they needed about these items.
If I could follow up, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, I guess I'm not familiar with any work that's being done on high-speed internet downtown. So, if there is some... You know, that's information I don't have. Some of these others, I definitely am very familiar with. So, I guess...
Yep. So, let's get you an update on that. And I'm looking at my cheat sheet.
You picked the one issue where we don't have staff here tonight, because of a combination of sickness and events going on that I did not have the heart to tell the person not to go to. So, we have to... We'll have to get back to you on the high-speed internet downtown. The RFP is out, and that's the extent of the status I can give you this evening.
Yeah. There's a... I think I've been following this, and there's quite a bit of work to go on here. Just the RFP out is one thing, and sort of more discussion, I think, is going to be required here to really understand what our capacity is, what the capacity of the existing system is, and how the two could perhaps collide and resolve this issue successfully. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question in regards to the Sobering Center.
Okay.
So, who would be the right person?
I think between myself and the police chief, we should be able to answer those.
Okay. Perfect. I know this was an identified need and something the community was really excited about. My question is, it looks like from the report that because... I think this was supposed to be a partnership effort with many other agencies, and I'm seeing here, there's still a budget shortfall of over six figures, $188,000, as an annual operating cost that we're still short by. So, my question is, acknowledging that this is an important service and acknowledging that this is something the community wants, my question to staff is, if we're not able to fund this ourselves, can we... What are our options? Do we put it on hold? Do we say we've got to focus more on partners and their immediate need? Kind of looking for some explanations behind that, because it would seem like that's a big gap to fill. But again, I don't work with city budget. It would be a big gap for me to fill.
So, you want to understand what your options are?
Right.
Go ahead. Chief, do you want to?
The project, if I may back up slightly, with the considerable assistance of the state of Oregon, we... In urban renewal, we have the capital portion of that project funded, where we've been taking some time in working with other partners, Salem Health, Marion County specifically, is to fund the operating. The work on finding partners, of discussing the contributions, the commitment from each partner continues. And I expect that council will be receiving updates on that over the remainder of this year. And certainly, if council continues to have the Sobering Center as a priority, it will be part of the update for the January work session, where I may very well have a recommendation regarding the operating portion of the project.
So, thank you, City Manager Powers. What would the impact be if we decided to... It sounds like if we already have the capital portion funded, would we have the option of waiting? How much staff time is going into this per se, the additional operating costs with partners? What kind of flexibility or options do we have at this point? Or are we putting resources into something that will not be matched?
The work on each partner's share of the project is continuing. The model is to have Bridgeway be the provider. The staff time for the city is minimal. The chief may disagree with me, but the staff time has really been Jerry and I attending the meetings, trying to work through how we can get this center funded and talking to as many people as we can that may be a potential... Agencies that could be a potential funder.
And when the Sobering Center does open, Chief, would you mind explaining how this would impact your, I'm thinking, staff time, but I guess that translates to budget?
Certainly. Jerry Moore, Chief of Police. We spend a great deal of time on people that are in a physical condition where they're unable to care for themselves. And most often, or very often, those people are either transported to Salem Hospital, or we look for other ways to deal with them. The Sobering Center, we believe, would reduce the amount of time that our officers need to deal with folks in that condition, and at the same time, would reduce the resource drain on both the Salem Fire Department and the Police Department, and of course, Salem Hospital. So, I think it would have a huge impact on all three of those organizations and would allow us to do the other things that we're required to do.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other... Yeah, Counselor McCoy.
I guess I'm approaching this... I'm not going to be here, so I probably ought to be quiet, but... If you're going to make decisions in January, I think you need some of the answers now, or you're going to walk in there with these same... Some of the questions I've got, this doesn't pertain to this, Chief, but this is a home...
Hopefully, these questions are being recorded and understood.
Okay, good, because this pertains, for example, the homeless rental assistance program. You know, we budgeted 1.4 million, and the goal is 100 people. Well, you know, the year's gone by, and we've got 100 people in the program. We've got another 1.4 million in the budget, right, for next year? Does that... Is that to maintain, for example, the current 100? Or at some point, do the first 100 start filtering out into the community, and we're looking to spend another 1.4, taking another 100 people off the street?
It's for another 100, and we have Housing Authority staff here this evening who can provide additional detail on the status of the program and the readiness of the clients in the program to move to housing.
I think that's sort of important, because it's unclear to me... Well, I'd like to hear what they have to say, because it seems to me it's the same 1.4 million, and if you, you know, let's say 50 stay in those... I just want to understand how this is going to work. I don't think we're evicting people after one year. So, I would... Now, as we go into a second year, and we put another, the same amount of money in, is it either going to be static, or does it need more money to continue to grow and serve the people we've not only drawn in, but need to come into the program moving forward?
Before Andy takes over, it would be an additional 100. The first 100 are... Have moved on to vouchers. So, the city funding that you're referring to, Counselor, is for the preparation of those individuals to move from transitional housing to what we refer to as permanent housing through the vouchers.
Okay. So, and so, they're from another source? When you say vouchers?
Yes, sir. Rental vouchers that we get through HUD, Andy Wilch. We also have some lingering kind of rental units that are also getting out of HUD's not giving us what we need right now. And so, we're trying to make that work, but we have another slight issue, which is it's hard to find housing. So, that's the crux of that. And so, landlords are stepping up, but not in enough numbers to pick up our clients and their units.
But the aspiration will remain 100, and we will have 200 next year.
Exactly. If I may, Mayor, I think should council and the Housing Authority Commission should really congratulate itself, because you've launched a program that is actually, we're ahead of schedule. We have the second 100. Setting aside the real challenges that Andy just mentioned, we have, through the transitional support, the wraparound services, we could have the second 100 housed by July of next year.
So, we've got that 100 identified, and they're all in the queue?
They are in the queue. We... Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I just close saying, you know, in my four years on the council, I'm probably the most proud to have voted and supported this. I think it's wonderful, and I hope we continue to do so moving forward.
Counselor Kaser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to talk...
I'd like to talk about bringing forward some of the recommendations from the Downtown Homelessness Solutions Task Force, because they're not in our staff report at all, and it's something we've spent quite a bit of time talking about and have brought a lot of people together to talk about them. So, I would like to see those at least at our January meeting, if not more specifically. I think there's one in particular that's kind of, I don't think there'd be a lot of hard costs necessarily, it'd be mostly staff time, and that's the Downtown Good Neighbor Partnership.
Yeah.
And essentially convening that and making the city the convener of that group, essentially. But that is something that we need downtown. And there's other recommendations, too. The other two that really come to mind are, we need to provide more toilets downtown, and we need some storage space. So, I'd really like to see those added to our policy agenda for next year.
Yeah, I'd really second that. I think there was a lot of work put into that, and there were a number of those recommendations that really ought to be part of our homelessness goals and policies. So, I'd really agree, to the extent that that can be pulled together as part of that package on homelessness, I think it's real important, and I wouldn't, I hope the error, the error is on adding more of those recommendations, not less of them.
Was that three things, or one thing called Good Neighbor Partnership?
There are three separate recommendations. So, one is the Good Neighbor Partnership, the second is public toilet facilities, and the third is storage for people to be able to store their personal possessions who are experiencing homelessness.
Yeah. Counselor Hoy.
Along those lines, I second what Counselor Kaser said there. I'm wondering if we need to rework our, one of our goals or one of our agenda items. Right now, it's a very specific program, it's the ATRAP, but we really don't talk about homelessness in general.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm wondering if somehow we need to make a more general goal, and where all, there are several of these items that we decide on, that could go onto our agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to see a staff report around that broader issue as well, at least if it can go under sort of, well, yeah, I think you're right. I think we have to have ATRAP and a second item that allows us to expand our program beyond that to other homeless-related initiatives. So, I would hope staff could come back with that. Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to support what Counselor Kaser and Counselor Hoy was saying, I see, I'd like to ask some questions about improving the pedestrian safety and policies that would be a limited fiscal impact, but really, the policy change and how we're moving forward. I see with improving public transportation and improving pedestrian safety and relieving vehicular congestion, they're all separate items included on the policy agenda. But what I'm looking at is, are we looking at elements for unsafe design for pedestrians and making sure that when we're doing other things, we're including that pedestrian lens, that policy lens, and the work that we're continuing to do? Things like, I know we have the Safe Crossings Program, but really making sure that we're wrapping back around, so when these task force or these groups are set up for safe crossings, that the information that they're finding gets back to us, so when a road is improved or being maintained, we're implementing a protected bike lane, or we're improving the sidewalk, or we're looking at how it relates to the route. I see a real gap there, because even though we may be moving ahead in this one area of pedestrian safety, if we're not making sure that the roads that we're maintaining or improving are also not in conflict with those goals.
So, you're wanting to do more about improving pedestrian safety than what is currently itemized here?
But through a policy lens, making sure that-
So, a pedestrian safety policy-ish thing?
Well, I mean, we've talked about complete streets. We've talked about pedestrian policies, things like Vision Zero. We have the Congestion Relief Task Force.
So, a policy approach to pedestrian safety.
Right, to make sure that we're including feedback from these boards.
I don't think we have that material in place, so that would be one that, again, I would highlight with the understanding that you want to beef this up. We have a program here. It's not as complete, I think, as you're thinking.
Well, and it may be in direct conflict. If relieving vehicular congestion means, you know, widening a road, raising the speed limit, making sure that something goes through without a crosswalk, then that will totally make the traffic go faster.
Sure.
But it may not help the person that needs to get their mail on the other side of the street. So-
Again, I think this might be one for the 19th, but maybe we could, I'm not sure how to pull together what the policy would sound like.
I-
What are you asking staff to come back with?
I feel like having a complete streets policy lens might be a start, but honestly, I'd be interested in hearing what Director Fernandez has to say and what his thoughts are on this issue, if he's up for it.
He's up for it.
Good evening, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. I agree with you, Counselor. This is a terrible microphone. We have, we have a number of policies in place for, in fact, for pedestrian safety and pedestrian facilities and bicycle facilities. In fact, we were doing complete streets before that term became popular, because the, virtually all the projects that we've done over the last 20 years for bond issues that have been, that we've called the widening, are in fact, the widening is to add bike lanes and sidewalks, is the vast majority of the projects that we do. So, we already have that in place, we already think about that, where often there are compromises that need to be made, is where there's limited right-of-way. And then we have to make a choice, do we put in a 12th Street, the 12th Street Project's a perfect example, do we put in a five-foot sidewalk right up against the curb lane, because, you know, that's, so we limit the impacts to the existing properties and limit the cost of the project? Or do we buy another eight feet or five feet to create a buffer? So, that's where, that's where their issues come in, is when we have to compromise due to the economics of a situation.
So, am I hearing you say, though, that it would be no financial impact to implement a complete streets policy, because you're already doing it? So, if we pass a complete streets policy as a council, it would be in support of what you're doing already?
Yeah, well, what I'm, but I'm suggesting to you is that, is that the city council has already adopted a complete streets policy. It's already in the transportation system plan.
What we may want to do is make sure that on the 19th, we include the transportation system plan and the policies there, so that we can review them as part of our discussion around this one, to make sure we understand how this all fits together.
Well, and I want to be clear, I appreciate that as things surface, they can get addressed with individual policies unique to that circumstance, but I think if you're saying we already have a complete streets policy, being able to look at, if it is clear in place-
Yeah.
-this is it, what it is, and making sure that it's clear as a guiding-
That seems like an exactly appropriate, you're putting that on here, and we can ask Peter to come back at the January meeting, say, this is what the policy is, this is what it looks like, you know, and then you can decide if that meets your needs, or if you want to have a project to upgrade it.
Well, and if I may, Mr. Mayor, one follow-up. So, we talked about the role, not just of the policy decisions, but also boards and commissions, and you had mentioned Director Fernandez, the boards that, or the task force, or different groups that are responsible with these decisions. Would you be able to provide the lists of some of these groups that would be involved, and we can help figure out where we would want to shift those?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah. I think that's a really good idea. I think that would give us a real complete understanding of where we are, how we, and how we get from here to there, kind of, I think you're a really good point.
Okay.
He'd be glad to do it.
Thank you.
So, we're sort of drifting into suggestions. I want to make sure, before we go hull-hog there, are there other, are there questions or anything else you want more information from staff on about the, about the list on the dashboard? Otherwise, we'll just continue sort of with things you want to hear more about in January, but questions?
I have a question on budget. So, I would be interested to hear, I know we, during the last budget session, had talked about the impact on working capital and operating costs. I know since then, we've had the algo bloom and several unexpected things that have happened, and we're meeting goals, and how are things looking as far as working capital and the budget and those issues?
That is so timely, because, in fact, I'll be able to talk to you about that well in advance of your January work session. We'll be coming back to the council as part of the Budget Committee on December 10th to talk to you about the five-year forecast for the city. And that includes the general fund, includes the water, the utility fund, which would be the algo bloom, so we're on it, Counselor.
Anybody else?
Well, I'll just jump in and just-
Counselor Osick.
So, for a couple of these things that are moving forward, I guess, on the sheet here, I guess, just more information on where we're at, or if there's a time that we, that we would get more information, because I don't know if it's necessarily January for some, like the water, a new water plant, if that's something that's far enough along to have detail, or more long lines of where are we at with the justification for what kind of plant we might need, or what size or any of that. So, some of it's just more information on the status, probably. I think one other question I had was about the-
Why don't we address that one, and then?
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Osick. So, I just want to be clear, what we are working on are improvements to the Garin Island Water Treatment Plant. That's where the bulk of the money is being spent. And then there are projects being put together to create secondary sources, a secondary source of water mostly from groundwater sources. So, that's what we're working on, and a lot of that information will be coming to you from, when we do the CIP, where you'll see where we have funded, we've moved the ozone project, you know, the projects that, that address Garin Island specifically have been moved up in the CIP, and other projects have been deferred, and I talked about that at our rate hearing, and I want to get that back to you so you can see how projects have moved around. Everything is still funded, just some things have been deferred and the like to make, to make room for the more urgent projects. But there's no new water plant, so I just wanted to, yeah, I just wanted to address those words, and I see you looking at the sheet, so I'm looking at the sheet, and this print is very small, so. Yeah, so it talks about secondary sources, so that's, those are the groundwater.
I guess, when it said secondary source, based on our conversations before, when we were out at the plant, there was, we were talking, when you were here, that you were looking at, we needed to put that in our plan for the next few years, and so I-
Right.
-I kind of jumped to, that's one of the things you're planning, because it's in the, the planning area there of what's coming up, and so, so that was the-
Yeah, so longer-term planning, so we can all be clear, so longer-term planning, of course, we want to think about, you know, perhaps using the Willamette and thinking about a secondary, about a second water treatment plant, but that is, you know, that issue has not had any kind of public, you know, we talk about that, you know, as we muse in, you know, in our, in our utility planning circles, but we have not put that in any kind of official document, we have not had an opportunity to go out to the public to talk about that, to come to council. So, that requires its own separate process over time, and what we're focused on, and that's coming, but what we're focused on right now is the design and construction of the improvements at Garin Island and developing the secondary sources of water, which are primarily groundwater wells.
Those other things aren't in the, on the 2019 horizon?
No, they are, they are things that we'll work on, because we have utility planning people that, that think about these things and work on these things, but it's, but it's not, you know, in the front burner, being actively worked on at this time.
Counselor Osick, you had another question?
Yeah, and just, I think this will be completely different here, but the issue on the long-term investment strategy, and I guess, just a question of, we're working on a bonding strategy, but also moving forward with a bond, so it's kind of the question of, shouldn't we have the strategy before we have the bond measure, and maybe we need to prioritize that strategy if we need a bond measure in 2020 to get that ready, so that's included in the strategic plan.
Yeah, the, excuse me, the information that you have as part of tonight's discussion is really staff's. My proposal that the fire apparatus be considered, certainly, if council wanted to take a step back, develop a strategy, review some of the other needs, that's certainly possible for consideration.
And those, that bonding strategy has generally been handled by the Finance Committee. We have a committee-
We just haven't met for a while, though. We've gotten, or maybe today was canceled again, so, so, which is, you know, I understand people have holidays and things, but-
Well, we're not ready to come up with the bonding strategy today, but-
Well, not today, but-
But it's part of their charge, yeah.
That would be, well, yeah, I'm on that committee, I understand, but I'm just saying, that's something we need to discuss, in my opinion, or at least figure out before we set one forward, is, is this the first one or not?
We will. And I agree with you completely, yeah. Counselor?
I have, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question in regards to code compliance and how it relates to our policy goals and policy agenda for the upcoming year. I'm just thinking of how, you know, we want to have apartments and housing for people, and how it was, it was highlighted during one of our staff presentations, that we had one person inspecting all multifamily units, how, I'm thinking of issues chronically in different wards, where we're having to see how code is affecting livability in these issues. I think it would be interesting to have that, not necessarily pushing for a policy, not necessarily looking at staff, but to take a closer kind of deep dive into, okay, what is code doing, what is being enforced, how is our changing policy goal, or how is our growth and development affecting that workload, and are we at the level to maintain or expand it?
That sounds more like a proposal for something you'd like to hear more about in January than a question you expect an answer to right now.
Right now, sure.
Is that true?
I'll take it either way.
Well, it looks like Norm's got something to say, though.
Yeah. Counselor Cook, I want to do the same, and the most important thing that I need to stress here in terms of timing is, we're working with IT to build a case management software so we can get better information on this entire issue and all the questions that you just raised. We think that we're going to have a workable case management system with reliable, regular data, starting in late January. So, we can certainly have the conversation, but anything that comes up in January, I just want to caution that we want to have a good, solid three months with this new system of good, reliable data before we can start to really see what's, what the answers are for those questions you just raised.
Thank you, Director Wright. I had a, is this the same software that we talked about, where if someone calls the non-emergency number with, my neighbor's got a loud party, and it ends up, that it will, instead of just being a lower priority, or maybe because of how busy the night is, someone's not able to get their right-of-way? When they call again, and they say, this is the third time that I've called, you're able to connect with police and non-emergency in that same way? Is this that software?
It is a step towards that software. That is a level three, or a phase three, rather, and we're on phase one, but yes, these things are connected.
We walk before we run.
I get a sense folks are ready to talk about things that we want to put on the table for discussion in January. So, let me rephrase the question we're trying to answer here. We have this set of items that are underway, and unless you tell staff otherwise, will continue as, as apace as they are. And the question before you is, are there additional things that you would like the council to spend time on during 2019, or perhaps a board or a commission, or something you'd like to have staff tell you, what would it mean to get into that? So far, you've identified additional homeless programs beyond what's already on this sheet. You've identified a more broad policy approach to pedestrian safety, and you've identified the code compliance relationship to policy, as things came out of the discussion already, but this would be a great time to bring up additional things that you want staff to tell you in January, what the implications of putting those on the agenda would be.
Okay, Counselor Osick.
And this is where I was being prompted to remind me of the bonding strategy that I just mentioned, as something for the-
Excellent. Nice. For like the next two to four years? For like the next two to four years, or how, do you have a feel for it?
Well, I mean, I remember the last thing we saw, we had a pretty, a long window, we just didn't, I don't think we made a settled decision. It was just kind of, here's some ideas of things we need. Yeah, figure out how we're going to prioritize them, because we have a list of things, of needs, for sure.
Yeah. That needs to get done. Okay, councillor Kaser.
Thanks. I'm still trying to figure out on this, the sheet, what is the difference between things in green and the things in white? It just doesn't make any sense if they're going to be on the policy agenda, or if they're not, but they're continuing. It's like, why aren't they just the same? I don't understand.
Well, that's, that's, that's an outstanding question. I've spent some of the last few days asking myself the same question. I would say that the, the things that are green are the things that we identified early in January of this year. And we put them up, and we ranked them, and we realized as we were getting ready for the meeting that the internet downtown should be green, too. That's basically a typo, that it wasn't there. Some of these other things, like the police facility, were already happening and are major initiatives that were already underway before we had that conversation in January. So they didn't come up on the list, but it seemed inappropriate to not have them represented here. The safe drinking water thing became an issue after you had that conversation in January. So some other things are here. It would seem to me to be rational, and I'm just kind of making this up as I'm saying it, that after we're done with this process right now, that everything that comes out the other end should be in green and should be part of that agenda. That seems like that would make more sense than what we're looking at right now.
But I guess I would just add that, you know, if we're finding it confusing, then, I mean, other people are going to find it confusing as well. So just to be clear, I guess, we're all on our policy agenda.
I'm happy, I'm happy they're all on the same piece of paper, though.
Well, I, should we, we're still adding to our list.
We're still adding to the list.
I would like to add the tourism promotion area, to have that looked at by the top board and by the council over the next several months, figure out where we're going with that. Councillor McCoy.
Might be a little redundant since something's on here about the vehicle congestion, but seems to me we need to be ready, what do we want to do out of that big old list from the congestion task force? What of those are we going to attack, if any, in the coming year? Because you sure as heck can't do them all, so.
And I think if councillors are willing this evening, it would be helpful to have some guidance, if it's all 17, or if there are a few from that list of short-term recommendations that you would like us to focus on between now and your January work session.
We'll give away a section to, a chance to pull them up and kind of go through them. Yes, councillor.
Did you want the library added to this list or not?
Do you want it added to the list?
Yeah.
I was asking.
Yes.
Yes, okay, yes.
Yes.
And the library was on here. It's your monitoring, council.
Well, it's, it's library.
Programming.
Monitoring, the construction monitoring and program experience, service.
Service, programming, staffing, all of that.
We are going to get this fixed, right?
If somebody had a hearing.
We want this mic fixed.
If somebody was attending and they had a hearing, it would be awful for them to listen to.
It would. It is without that.
Yeah, it's bad enough this way.
Okay, councillor, go ahead. Councillor Hoy.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to suggest that we have staff look at all, at all 17 of the items on it. I mean, I just think that's the appropriate thing to do. They're all short-term. I think there are, a lot of them are fairly doable.
A lot of them are interrelated, different kinds of signing strategies. It's sort of like signing, it's lanes, it's, yeah, I mean, it's not 17 different things.
Exactly. So I would like them to address all of them. The other thing I would like to add to our list, under natural environment stewardship, I appreciate that we're working on the greenhouse gas inventory, but I would like to see the environmental action plan started, or developed, or something more than just the greenhouse gas inventory.
Well, and would that include a waste?
Well, let's, let's stay with his for just a second. So what you're saying is, as we complete the greenhouse gas inventory, begin the application of that to a climate action plan?
Yes. I just want to make sure it's in the queue, it's from our original set of goals.
Keeps going, yeah.
Right, right.
Okay. That really doesn't show up here, does it?
No.
So that would be sort of added to the greenhouse gas emission to begin the process.
I wanted to second that, too.
So just a question for clarification with councillor Hoy. For the congestion task force committee, would you also want to see which partners? We had talked about delegating or boards and commissions that are involved, and there's a whole section for key partners. Would part of that staff report also be the role, defining that role that partners are playing as far as implementation of these 17 items?
Yeah. If you recall how councillor Anderson approached it, I thought he had, he had, I thought he was one step ahead, but it's really allowing staff to look at the assignment of parts of it, kind of what is the appropriate way? Is there something that should be in the CIP? Is there, yeah, it's letting staff rationalize that list into a package of projects, or policies, or action items for commissions or for the council.
Thank you for that point of clarification. And then just a second issue for the environmental action plan. I would like for that to include a comprehensive waste strategy. And having that be something involving, right now, we've got multiple issues as far as the fees, the partners with incinerator, with trash costs. These are issues that keep coming up, and I think it's something that we need to have more information about in our approach to be able to address it for residents.
Other issues in the community under the staff report specifically list the solid waste management plan and the fact that we're going to meet, I think you should keep that separate, no, get it lost in a climate action plan. I think they're too, I understand they're all environmental, but I think it's just going to get lost in a greater environmental plan that I don't think you want to go down that road.
We may, we may use the model we're using for our water wastewater. We may have some other, there's some different ways to look at it, and I think that, but having a solid waste management planning effort, or plan, or the outcome would be a plan of some kind.
Okay.
So we're no longer surprised by rate changes, or...
So we can manage it ourselves to be able to mitigate the costs and be able to anticipate?
Well, the way, the model we use for water wastewater is a really collaborative plan with other units of government that are involved, and maybe look at it in some way like that, and see, see what it would take in terms of staff resources. We may not have the right staff resources, but it can help us get, sort of rationalize it as we work our way through this.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I wanted to ask, too, is about this. So what we're talking about here is all these strategic, I guess, the strategic part of the city, the new things. But I think we've talked, when we talked, and when we talked the other day, actually, we talked a little bit about the good governance and diving into, so now that we've done our first pass-it, priority-based budgeting, what have we learned and what can we do better? And I think one of the pieces that I mentioned was, what are the things that the city needs to support that? So we've talked briefly a little bit about IT there, about that new case management system, or data to be able to look at, when we were trying to set rates for, for our revenue task force, we don't have the data to figure out how to do it in an equitable way. We couldn't charge different rates based on income or anything like that. There's, there's a lack of data to support some of the lenses we're trying to look at things. So kind of getting into that, what lessons have we learned as we were developing more of these, more of this line of sight into our operations, from the strategic plan down to now we're at priority-based budgeting, which takes us into what different parts of the city are doing to help us figure out what are some major things in operations that we need to do to support those?
And you're mostly talking about data and information to support good governance, right?
Yeah, that's the, the sort of newish thing is not on here, but it kind of just ties it, tie it into the priority-based budgeting, I think, to show how it relates to that, and help us make decisions.
Yeah, it's really an evaluation of what management tools are in place, available to our budget. Do we have a large enough budget department? Do we have the right tools available to them? Does the manager have the tools he needs to make these kinds of management decisions, I think? And then us make rational policy decisions around that, is kind of what we're looking for.
Well, and to help empower Steve and staff to figure those, those things out internally, because we've got our, we've done a lot of our planning to kind of spell out our work, but understanding more in-depth the work, I think what, what I heard back from the priority-based budgeting is learning a lot about, there's some programs that overlap, there's some areas that are in different departments that maybe shouldn't be, that could be together, and things like that. So kind of learning a little bit about taking us to the next step of, of understanding how the city's running for that transparency for the council to be able to see, okay, we spent that money there because we know this is what's needed, based on that information.
Councillor Lewis.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether this should be added under safe and reliable infrastructure or a subsection under relieving vehicular congestion. But to be honest, I'm surprised we haven't talked a little bit more about the survey and the open house that the city conducted in the community survey. Because I feel as though we're talking about, right now, about what seven people are interested in, and we should be speaking about what 165,000 people are interested in. So I want the additional river crossing to be a topic of conversation. And I'm saying that because it's clear by these surveys and polls that that is what the community wants this council to be engaged in.
So 13 years wasn't enough?
Not yet.
Councillor Kaser.
Thanks. I wanted to go back, actually, to the budgeting, priority-based budgeting. I'm just, Mr. City Manager, could you give an update, I guess, on where are we at as far as aligning our departments to our strategic goals? I know that was one of the tasks for the priority-based budgeting, was to do that. And I guess I just haven't heard recently kind of where we're at with that. Could you provide an update?
Certainly, we begun with preparing an inventory of the programs, categorizing the programs based upon the result areas alignment with, with council's goals. We are planning on providing an update to the Budget Committee in December. I would ask Kelly Jacobs to add additional detail this evening, if that would be of interest to council.
The problem is I have so much additional information. So what I will promise you, though, is there is a report, there'll be a report coming your way. We are through with, we've completed the first year of implementation, and we had an opportunity to talk to councillor Osick a little bit about it last week. It just was an occasion that occurred, and we chatted a little bit about it. And there are some things that went extremely well, and there are some things that we know as a result of this first experience that we can do better in the next experience, and some of it will involve all of you as well. I mean, there are some things where we're going to need your help. But for right now, for the, after this first year, it's an opportunity for departments to take a look at the data, to consider what we learned, and then for us all to consider how we can improve this process and make it really very vital and foundational for the city as we move forward with our budgeting. So it went well.
Follow-up to what councillor Lewis just said. I agree, let's make a decision about some river crossing. Does it do it next year?
Yeah.
One way or another.
Maybe soon.
So kind of remind you where we are in this process. We may, we may have the list done, but I want to just, again, reframe what the, what we're trying to accomplish here in addition to fix the PA system, is we are trying to identify the council's policy priorities going forward. And that would be, we'll continue with these things, and then what are the issues that we want to take the council, sort of your time, your work session time next year, to chew on, or to ask your boards and commissions to do? And not necessarily have significant budget impact, because we're constrained on budget. And if we, if we stop the meeting at this instant, we'd be in a place where you had 11 things that we'd come back at your meeting in January, that the staff would be prepared to tell you, if we had this item on the list for next year, then it might look like that. This is how we could go about it next year, or present some choices, so you could decide on a final list. My own arithmetic is there are 12 months in 2019, if you had a work session once a month, and one of them was the one in January that we're talking about, and the other, and one late in the year was like this one, you got like 10 work sessions that you might dedicate to this stuff. So try to get you to a list of 10 or less. So that's kind of where we are, and you can see what the 11 are. I'll read them in a second, but councillor Cook.
Are we closed yet, or can we write other things up on there?
No, I think, I'm just checking in to make sure that people have got what they want up here.
Well, I'm definitely interested in looking at the Neighborhood Association Support Services, just getting a more in-depth report onto how things are going at the neighborhood level as far as how the neighborhoods are functioning as a group, the support that we give to them as a city, and perhaps what the role is in facilitating or resolving conflict, or providing leadership in those areas.
So the current statement here as a policy goal is not...
I just would like some additional material on it for reward.
More of a staff report than a work session.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, if I may. The work session is just a guy, that's not an absolute. It was, it was a guy to help come up with a short list for between now and January.
Anything else you'd like to add to the list, or there any?
I want to push back a little bit on the congestion task force recommendations. I heard Steve say he'd love to hear some guidance from council, and I heard you all say, examine them all. And that's, that's one of your options. I'm just checking in, is that, is that everybody, because I felt like Steve was asking for some direction there, and he didn't really get it, so.
Well, I feel like we did give direction. But also, it is already on our list, so it's confusing on when we need to amplify it and when we don't. Because I'm, I didn't talk about improving public transportation, but that's certainly something that I want to make sure that is still on our list and is still getting these staff attention, and I'm sure it is. But relieving congestion, that is already there, so I guess I'm a little bit confused.
It's pretty well written up. It's just a lot of it is just figuring out how, what, what would an implement, implementation strategy look like for it? And there may be parts of it, the recommendation will be, we can't do this.
Right.
This is not one we can do. I mean, it's really based on the judgment, I think, and reliance on staff to help us through that. That's a lot of stuff, but it actually has some real categorical nature to it, I think, that allow you to, if we can't afford signs, let's not talk about signs, you know? Yeah.
If I can just add, I mean, our task force met what, six times for two hours, or something like that?
Oh, yeah.
For four, four people plus staff? I mean, we've invested dozens of hours into this, so I think it warrants.
Julie could get up right now and tell us the whole thing and what we ought to be working on. We know that we can rely on her for that. I think it's fleshed out. And that's, that I think, there's not a lot of writing.
I just wanted to check in.
Yeah.
Steve, if the direction that we get is that we're going to write these, this list up, does that work? Do you need more clarity than this?
No.
I think it's 12 or 13.
Yeah.
So...
It seems like, sorry, it seems like some of these we have just questions about. Like, the more Neighborhood Support Services, I think, like, you know, count... support services, I think what, you know, Counselor Cook is saying is she wants to know some more info about how it's going, not necessarily like we're going to set policy around it, but, and that's, that's why it's on that list, so.
That often just comes up during the budget process, too. Have we got enough? Do you need more? The answer is, yeah, but I have to take it away from here and we go through it in a budget process.
And I, I, I don't know, this may just be my perception, being out in the community and talking with people, but in the same way that, you know, someone can come and testify, like what happened at Coral, we have this situation, here's what's happening, and then staff dedicate some needs towards it and so then staff says, you know, hey, we're addressing this issue and then you go back and talk with the neighbors, no, it's still not addressed. Sometimes I feel like that happens in other areas and I know we're getting our information from the staff reports, but when I am engaging with people, whether it's at a neighborhood meeting or out and about town, sometimes the information that they're giving me is not meshing necessarily with the staff report, whether it's, you know, well, I'm getting services in a timely way or I feel like this is, I feel like the unsafe street in front of my house, there's, I understand they can't fix it right now, but there's a way that I can go. What, what I'm sometimes hearing is, you know, I really wish I could do this, but I can't or I'm finding this isn't working as well as I would like. And it puts, it, for me as council to be able to advocate for that or to, for me to be able to identify, maybe the system isn't working quite as well, maybe there's a barrier here we could look at to relieve. And also being conscious that the city has its role. I mean, I think if anything, the Alco Bloom taught us that this, if we don't have water, if we don't have air, if we don't have this safe space, we don't have much. So those have to be our first priority. But with neighborhood support services, making sure that there's that constant feedback with, with all of these things, I guess that's what I'm saying. I don't know. And I'm not sure if other counselors feel that way. I just know that it came up a few times this week where someone said something about their experience and it felt like I didn't have that support in the staff report.
You know, I would interject, though, you look at our poll statistically valid, 91% of the people think we're doing a good job. So when you get into specifics or somebody has a gripe, you're not going to always make them happy and I've learned that and I've, even, even Counselor Hoy looks surprised at that, but it's true.
Point taken.
But my, my point would be, I mean, sometimes Sally, consider the, consider the source. I've got stuff where I've gotten it done. I know it's done. I, what they, and they're still complaining at me because they don't like the way it was done.
Well, and I, I understand no good deed goes unpunished and I certainly respect and appreciate your perspective and the, the time that you've, you know, helped on council with this issue, but that's not what I'm talking about specifically. I'm talking about these specific situations where someone is saying, hey, I tried this venue and it's not working or I tried to use a service and it's closed or this isn't happening and somehow a ball is being dropped and maybe it's because of staffing or maybe it's because we weren't looking at it this way. I mean, we had a situation just the other week where there's, there's a lot of things to do, so things sometimes do get dropped. And I think staff and council, we are responsive to that where it's like, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to forget about that email or I didn't mean to forget about this particular issue. But it's important to look at those systems, especially the frontline direct service folks because I know Director Wright talked about kind of taking a temperature. We do take the temperature of the city residents and saying, how's the performance and how's the survey? But what I'm hearing when people do contact me is, wow, this was a, this was a problem that we need to shore up the system with. And I'm not quite sure how it.
Consider the source. If it's 100 people, we got an issue. If it's three people, I'm not sure. If it's 170,000, you have an issue.
Well, and certainly if we're looking only at metrics, that may be the case.
That's all they have to run the city, Sally. They can't go individually down to the face person and do these kinds of things. It doesn't work that way. You can't, you can't do that.
Well, I think we'll have an opportunity, I seriously, during the budget process, this issue always comes up and I think it, there will be a really good opportunity, but I think as Mr. Wright looks at this with his staff, with Brady and company, they, they can tell us, I, I, you know, there are some things with the neighborhood. Remember, they are independent of the city.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. So, but there'll be, I think we'll hear some information from them on this. I really do. I hear what you're saying, I think, yeah.
If I may, so to clarify, this, this last item is more on neighborhood association support?
We don't have, we have a support, we have neighborhood associations. Is that what you're thinking of?
Well, I'm just trying to think direct service lines. I'm trying to think, because that would cover code, that would cover neighborhood liaisons, that would cover that part of it.
You know, the neighborhood enhancement division unit, whatever they call it, that does like compliance, neighborhood services, that kind of stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
I have a totally unrelated thing.
Okay, would you want to let Norm? You want to add to this?
I just want to just reaffirm, we will, we will, no, it's okay. We'll develop a report that basically gives a, a broad view of neighborhood enhancement division. That will include the, the partnership program as an important piece of this, that will include code compliance and their work so far and that will include the liaison program. We'll look particularly to articulate any of the systemic or long-running issues that may be coming up that can really be a part of this Beyonce, particular case-by-case instances. And so what we find in that, it will take some time, but, but we'll work to, to deliver that report for all of you.
Great, thank you.
One last thing that I thought about and I'm just going to throw it out there for consideration because I'm not, I'm not totally committed to it, but something that we've come up against in the last couple of years I've been on council is when we're considering subdivisions and land use, the report, and help me out here, it's the trips generated by.
Vehicular trips.
Whatever that's called, that study.
Traffic impact study.
Traffic impact study.
Yeah.
This has been something that I know we've talked about during our deliberations that comes up as an issue because if you have a small subdivision, they are not required to do that if it's not going to generate so many trips and then we don't get that information and then you always hear.
There's a threshold, yeah.
Right, and you always hear the neighbors come out and they're like, whoa, but there's already all these trips and you have to consider this and that and by land use, it's like, well, you don't have to. You have to consider it by itself and not to things around it that are already developed. So I think it would be, I think it would be beneficial to, to try to get at that question. How best do you approach, you know, looking at development and knowing that we're going to be infilling and, and growing, but, you know, how do we make, how do we make decisions when we know that, yeah, there might be a, a 10 lot subdivision, but it's going to generate a lot of traffic or, I don't know, something like that.
No, that's a.
I know it's an issue that keeps coming up again and again. It's kind of something we've kind of kicked down the road a bit.
I think that'd be one of those our, our Salem questions. It really does become part of the comprehensive planning process and planning process that we may want to be sure to get that referred to that process.
Yeah, maybe something that's just highlighted in that or noted to specifically study that. I just know that it'll come up again in the next year.
Oh, yeah.
At least, at least once, if not more.
Yeah.
Every time.
Every time, yeah. Yeah, and I, Norm caught that as, as part of the R, or R Salem, R Salem, I'm sorry.
But just so that I make sure, is this, is this a topic that we want to flag for future conversations in the context of our Salem?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you. We've got a process there. We don't want to probably.
So, so this item, the traffic impact studies is going to be part of the R Salem process?
It's part of land use planning. And we've got a good, big policy section on that going on. Okay, anything else? Anything, Mr. Manager?
No, thank you very much.
Mina, did you have anything? Did you want to? You have any policy things for human resources you wanted to, okay, then. If Mina's satisfied, we're adjourned.